Good evening, I'd like to welcome you to the East Hemphill Township Board of Supervisors Meeting. Tonight's meeting has been advertised to be held in person and online using Zoom with login and call-in information posted on our website. If you're calling into the meeting, I'd like to encourage you to remain on the call, but to also go to the township website by Googling East Hemphill Township and to log on to the Zoom meeting following the instructions on our homepage. Tonight's video and audio is being recorded. For tonight's meeting, Robert rules will still apply, and the meeting will be run by the chairman who will be assisted by an employee managing the Zoom site. Everyone on Zoom will have their microphones muted in order for the audio to be heard clearly. During the meeting, both those present and on the line, only one person at a time speaks, and they must be recognized by the chairman. Many people speaking at the same time combined with background noise makes meetings like this difficult to hear on Zoom. This rule will be strictly enforced. For people utilizing Zoom, you'll need to use chat function to be recognized by the chairman. To be recognized with the chat function, you must be either a presenter who's on an agenda or a resident or business owner in East Hemphill Township who wishes to comment on an agenda item where you must text your name and address. Your request to speak will then be passed on by staff to the chairman to be recognized. The steps to speak utilizing Zoom are simple. Request to be recognized by the chairman via chat to speak. Once recognized by the chairman, unmute your microphone. After receiving recognition, speak. When done speaking, mute your microphone. For Zoom, any violations of the mentioned rule will be deemed to be acting out of order, and your mute microphone will be muted immediately without warning. Continued violations will result in you being electronically removed from the meeting. Robert's rules applies for all those attending the meeting in person. All voting tonight will be done by roll call votes, and ensure all votes are properly accounted for. Roll call will be conducted by the township manager. There will be no action taken on any non-agenda items of a non-emergency, non-urgent nature that arise during the meeting. All such items will be referred to staff and will be handled at a later meeting. East Hemphill Township's public comment rules will apply for all public comment. You must be a resident or business owner of the township to speak. You must identify yourself by name and address before speaking, and sign the guest log for meeting minutes and purposes, or follow the chat procedure already discussed for Zoom attendants. Comment is limited to three minutes and must be about the agenda item being discussed, with the exception of public comment at the end of the meeting for non-agenda items. No action will be taken during the public comment period for any non-agenda item with all issues referred to staff. We ask for your continued patience and understanding as we strive to serving the residents and businesses of the township while fully complying with the social distancing requirements prescribed by our governor. So with that, we will now move on to our first agenda item, and that is a moment of silence in the place. Now the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Okay, the first item on our agenda, we have a request to add to our agenda, DCNR grant application for AHR Park Phase II submission scope. Ms. Switzer.
So I just recently received the budget for the AHR Park Phase II resubmission. We submitted last year for DCNR grant and were denied, and we'd like to resubmit this year. And the scope of the project, based on the budget, we included a pickleball court for about 154,000. So I need to discuss that with the board, what they would like to do in terms of changing the scope. That's the reason why I wanted to add it. The submission deadline for that is April 14th, I believe.
Any discussions of board adding that to the agenda? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to add that to the agenda.
Still moved.
Okay, motion for Mr. Bennett, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Wigglesworth, Ms. Switzer, please poll the board.
Mr. Weaver?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
The ayes have it, five to nothing. Next up, we have our consent agenda. The purpose of our consent agenda is to approve routine items that usually require very little debate or discussion. So with that, we'll open up the consent agenda to discussion. Nothing? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Still moved.
Okay, motion for Mr. LaFever, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Weaver, Ms. Switzer, please poll the board.
Mr. Weaver?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye, the ayes have it, five to nothing. Next up, we'll move on to our developments, our action items, and the first item is development services. It's nice to actually have something here after a couple months of hiatus. So we have the Lancaster AMA Realty Ventures LLC, a sketch plan and preliminary plan waiver for 1655 Columbia Avenue, and the action is on the preliminary plan waiver request for retail development. Mr. Beck.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For you gentlemen tonight is a sketch plan and preliminary plan waiver request that previously went to the planning commission for their review and recommendation. They reviewed the application on March 10th, and based on the fact that the project is redeveloping a current vacant restaurant, which was formerly Friendly's, at 1655 Columbia Avenue, they are going to raise the building and build, construct a brand-new building for Mavis Discount Tire. No phasing of the project. They are basically going to be keeping the same footprint for the building and actually reducing the amount of impervious area. So with that being said, staff supports the request to waive preliminary plan. The planning commission agreed and recommended approval of the preliminary plan waiver request with the conditions that they record an approved land development plan and contribute a fee in lieu of payment, or fee in lieu of contribution equivalent to the preliminary plan application fee. Attending via Zoom is Luke Morrow from Solely Engineering. He's available if you gentlemen have any questions.
Would you repeat the intended scope of the new building?
The new building is basically going to maintain the same footprint. I did forget to mention that based off of some staff request and guidance, they are actually going to close the eastern access to the lot, so all the traffic flow turning left into the site will go in via Princeton, I believe it is, and then it will be a right out onto Columbia Avenue from the Mavis Discount Tire. And I would have to defer to Luke's, I believe they're going to be a right in, or I'm sorry, a right out only, but it could be a left in, left out, but at least there is distance, enough distance between the westernmost access and Princeton Avenue that there's no conflicts.
Thank you. I kind of pretty much understood that from the narrative, but what I was wondering is the nature of the business that they intend to conduct.
It's Mavis Discount Tire, so it'll be a tire retailer.
Okay, and eight different bays or different vendors is what?
They will have eight bays to handle customers. I believe it's about 20 parking spaces, which based off of their analysis, they did use the ITE Parking Generation Manual, which came out to be between 17 and 19 for the 30th percentile. So they are providing almost the bare minimum parking that they need. Planning commission asked them to look at reducing the 20 spaces to possibly 19. They are going to consider that. At that point, when they talked to planning commission, they couldn't confirm that without doing more engineering.
You got the ability to pull the plan up. Unfortunately, I'm having some internet connection problems with my computer right now, so.
Just have narrative.
Yes, there was an error trying to load the plan up earlier.
Diane, can you give me sharing, please?
This is one motion, this up here.
So could you show the road that they're going to close, the driveway they're closing
So right here's, Princeton is to the east. Right now, there is an existing access right where the number six is.
Yep.
That will be, that will be closed and curbed off, but they will still have the western access. And it does appear from the design here that it would be a right out. Well, I should say, it could be right out or left, right out, looks to be right out or left out. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can, Luke.
This is okay. I just wanted to just clarify a couple things, John. I know we had spoke during our preliminary, you know, conversations a month or so back, so we were, you know, just to clarify for everybody, we're looking into the possibility to potentially do, I know what the right in, right out was mentioned, but, you know, we need to get into our full design to make sure, you know, trucks, you know, delivery trucks, most likely a large-sized box truck can make that movement, so we haven't fully committed to that right in, right out at that, at that unsignalized location on the west side there yet. I just wanted to clarify that, but we did, you know, we are taking the recommendations of the town into consideration. We just need to make sure that all those, you know, that design element does work.
Thank you, Luke. I appreciate that clarification.
And I know someone also asked about the eight service bays, so like John said, the Mavis Tire primary function is for tire sales and service, you know, rotating, balancing, brakes and stuff, but they do do, you know, other minor maintenance, topping off your fluids and changing windshield wiper blades and stuff like that as well.
Seems it's basically a brownfield redevelopment, so. Yes, sir. It almost be argued to be a stormwater plant. Any more questions of the board? Read the motion. The motion is to approve the preliminary plan waiver for Lancaster AMA Realty Ventures LLC Land Development Project at 1655 Columbia Avenue, township file 21-17.01, subject to the applicant reporting, recording an approved final land development plan and providing a fee in lieu of the contribution equivalent to the preliminary plan application fee. So do I hear a motion?
Still moved.
Okay, motion for Mr. Wigglesworth, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Bennett, Ms. Switzer, please poll the board.
Mr. Weaver?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye, the ayes have it, five to nothing. Thank your client for coming in and developing one of our vacant buildings, it's appreciated.
Thank you very much. Appreciate working with the town, everyone. Have a nice night.
So that concludes our development services. So we're going to move on now to the appointment of deputy emergency management coordinator for East Hemphill Township, Mr. John Kotmeyer. And I was, I don't know if Ms. Garber wants to talk about this or Ms. Switzer, so I'll just throw it out to the floor here.
Mrs. Garber is probably the most appropriate, she's been in close contact.
Can Ms. Garber, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So before you this morning, as a motion to appoint our new chief fire official, John Kotmeyer, as an additional deputy emergency management coordinator for East Hemphill Township. Unlike the primary emergency management coordinator, which is done through the state, deputies are simply appointed by the municipality. This is done as a part of things listed in his job description, as well as to ensure that all things are covered with being able to get him an emergency vehicle tag and then legalizing the use of lights and sirens on his vehicle. So you have a motion before you, and if you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Seems like a no-brainer at this point. Glad that we are in a position where we can have two qualified people serving that role, Ms. Garber. Heavy emphasis on qualified, you've done a wonderful job, so.
Thank you.
Any discussion of the board? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to appoint John Kotmeyer, chief fire official, as the additional deputy emergency management coordinator of East Hemphill Township, and approve the sharing of deputy emergency management coordinator services with East Petersburg Borough, Warwick Township, and Lidsborough, as documented in the previous memorands of understanding. So do I hear a motion?
Still moved.
Okay, motion for Mr. Wigglesworth, do I hear a second? Second from Mr. LaFever, Ms. Switzer, please poll the board.
Mr. Weaver?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye, the ayes have it, five to nothing.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, and thank him again for joining our township, we appreciate it.
He's actually on the call, I believe.
I think he's on.
Yes, he is, yes. By phone.
Okay. Oh, there it is, okay. Hope I see his phone. Okay, now, moving on, Centreville Road right-of-way, begin the declaration of taking a right-of-way. I would like to take a pause before I turn this over to Ms. Switzer to say about how pleased I am that we're getting to this point. It's been over 10 years, and the light at the end of tunnel is now there at this point with us having one of the largest road, the largest road projects ever done in the township occurring with the widening of Centreville Road from Columbia all the way to Marietta. It's been 10 long, hard years, and when we get to the point of doing this last step, this really is the last major step to taking this project out the bid, so this is a monumental moment. So Ms. Switzer, the floor is yours.
It's not quite the last step.
As far, the last hard step at this point.
Well, there will be another group of these.
Okay.
So we started this project, we hired Stan Tech to handle the right-of-way acquisition for the project. They have been working very diligently towards gaining right-of-way for the, I believe, we had, started with 48 parcels. They've settled on 27, and those choices with 21 that still need to be settled. Before you're on your agenda tonight, you have 10 of those, so you will see another group of these coming through, but they are still trying to negotiate and come to terms with that group, and they're making headway. These, they've reached out, they've made offers, and it's kind of stopped. So to keep the project moving forward, this would be the next step in keeping that process moving forward. We're hoping that the negotiations start up again and they settle, but this declaration of taking is the next required step.
So, any discussion of the board? July, August, breaking ground, September, I think we're looking at for the let date at this point?
Their let date actually got moved to January of '22. Yeah.
Oh.
I mean, that's the date, I mean, it can come sooner, but.
It never.
Utility, coordination, and right-of-way. And there's some difficult ones here that are going to take some time. Hopefully, they get settled before we get to the courts.
Okay, well, we could still hope for a fall with what the original schedule was, so.
Yeah.
Okay, so the motion I'll read out, the motion is to adopt Resolution 2021-08 to Resolution 2021-17, to begin the declaration of taking for right-of-way for Centreville Road South Project. Is there any comments or questions? I didn't ask that about from the public. Having one person in the public present in our room say none, I'll entertain that motion.
Still moved.
Okay, motion for Mr. Bennett, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Weaver, Ms. Switzer, please poll the board.
Mr. Weaver?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye, the ayes have it, five to nothing. Okay, next up is the retirement agreement for Mrs. Terry Snyder. Ms. Switzer?
So Terry Snyder has been our longest-term employee. She is, was coming up on completing 38 years of service. She had chosen to retire, and what you have before you is an agreement of retirement for Ms. Snyder.
This, all you guys know how hard she has worked for the township over the years. Every, one of those outings at the golf course, Saturday nights, Sunday nights.
Mr. Russell, this is Miss, this is the bookkeeper, senior bookkeeper.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. Two Terrys, but.
Two Terrys, wrong Terry.
Yep, yep.
So back to the bookkeeper side of things, then. Been one of those days. We all know how hard she has worked over the years with our budgeting and other items that we've worked on, and has been the very faithful steward of our township resources, so with that, I will entertain a motion to adopt an employee retirement agreement for Terry Snyder. With regrets.
Still moved.
Okay, motion for Mr. Bennett, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Wigglesworth, Ms. Switzer, please poll the board.
Mr. Weaver?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye, the ayes have it, five to nothing.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to old business, is there any old business?
We need to jump in with the grant at some point as well.
Ah, that's right, we got to take a step back. We did have add to the agenda the DCNR grant application for AHR Park Phase II submission scope. Ms. Switzer, the floor is yours again, and I guess we're going to DMA talk in a moment.
Yeah, Scott Hane is on online, Joellen, can't think of her name, I'm sorry.
Warren.
Warren, thank you, has been spearheading this project through, but Scott is aware of it. The first submittal included improvements to the, based on the master plan to the, for the park, it included improvements for driveway, a parking area, handicapped area next to our current pavilion, some landscaping, some additional trail work, another set of bocce courts, and another pavilion on the far side of the playground area. That grant was denied with the last submission, but we were strongly encouraged by DCNR representatives to resubmit. They simply ran out of funding, they thought the application was very worthwhile, and they encouraged us to resubmit, so we want to do that. In the meantime, there was discussion regarding adding to the scope and adding, and specifically pickleball courts. The budget that you have in your agenda includes that, 154,000 additional funds. However, that's going to kick over the project to more than what DCNR covers, DCNR grants cover 50%, it's a 50% match. Their max that they would give out is 250,000. So we're over that. So that would mean that the township would have to contribute about 40,000 in addition. Not sure if the township is at this point willing to do that, even though that there's definite need, but we would have to prove that to DCNR to submit this, and it would cloud the submission, the second submission, and which would put the award of the grant in jeopardy potentially.
You had commented in the past that if we get up to the $250,000 range, that would kind of, would not look favorably on the application too for a grant, so.
That's correct. If we pull that out, we're back down to 212 asking.
So really, when we're looking at that, it's also putting us in jeopardy of getting the whole grant denied a second time around.
Correct.
By going up to the full max 250, and if we were to do the 200,000 range, then we would be on the hook for over, what, 140,000 roughly?
No, 212.
How much would it be?
212.
No, if we did roughly 200,000, it was 90, 90,000 over because of the $250,000 limit I saw in your, the math that you had.
Yes.
So if we were to drop it down to 200,000 to make it in the window that DCNR would be applicable, we would be on the hook for another.
Sorry.
90,000 plus the extra 50,000, we'd be on the hook for $140,000 for this, we'd pretty much be paying the full, almost the full cost of the pickleball court in a way.
Not totally following your math, but.
Close, it's basically we're not getting the match because we'd have to discount the grant application down to a number that.
Our match would have to be higher, yes.
Be supportive of actually funding, not the full 250, because they're trying to encourage multiple grantees, so you're going to get reduced amount than what they're saying they could give.
Right.
So it's, sounds like it would be a pretty big financial commitment at this point to try and add that one additional item, and if we were to really do it right, we'd have to still ask roughly in the 200,000, 212 range to have a shot at winning the money.
Yes.
Based off the previous feedback we got.
How does this interface with our budget provisions?
This would be a 2022 expenditure.
Okay.
So we'd have the budget for it.
Okay.
And we have three years to do the work, so we could budget across years.
Thank you. There's actually some good budget news to talk about in a moment. It's actually some very good news, so, but that's a different discussion. So what's the thoughts at this point?
Well, I think, hearing the reasoning and explanation, I mean, I think we should submit the lower amount without the pickleball courts. Is that what we're discussing?
We had the original application, we had the manager recommendation to stick with the original, but then we got the additional numbers, they weren't quite as bad. It was actually, I think, worse at first when we were thinking about it.
Yeah, we were thinking higher numbers, but Scott Hane got back to us, and Joellen with a slightly lower number, we were thinking 200,000.
This is kind of a little bit of a revised number than what was in the original discussion.
I concur with Mr. Wigglesworth.
So, the email, I think that you had sent out Monday, Cindy, we were not going to include the pickleball courts, that was the recommendation?
That was before I got the budget.
Okay.
And my recommendation was that we do not.
And now that you got that information, okay.
This confirms that we should not.
You say we should not?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
And that we're more likely to get the grant for the lower amount?
Correct. Which would be the original submission.
That's not uncommon, most of the grant agencies don't like you to ask for the maximum amount, you gotta, you gotta get a little, give a little bit of a firmer commitment that makes your grant applications stand out versus the ones that are just asking for the max.
Even the first submission, we had to concede a bit and rework our numbers, so.
What does, what does the parking, we're going to step on people's toes, what do you guys?
Well, we're supportive of the action recommended by staff to eliminate the pickleball. You know, there are no locks in any of this, but we got a good, I think we've got a good indication that the resubmission would be looked upon favorably, and I think that leads us to where we're going to be. So overall, I think it's the right move for the township. You know, we do have a, an issue down the road with other types of recreation activities, and we'll have to relook at our situation, our ongoing situation with the pickleball at some point in the future.
Mr. Weaver?
Anything I was questioning was the $80,000 for the three rain gardens, is that something that DCNR wants in there, or is that for stormwater management? It just looks like a pretty big number.
The rain gardens are required for stormwater management. We did have that discussion with Joellen Warren and also Perry, and we could probably lower that number because of using township staff. It's basically just digging a hole and then the proper planting, or the basin, proper plantings.
We, actually, that's a good thing, because with these DCNR applications, the township staff can be served as matching funds.
Right.
Too, so that's actually not a.
I think that's why, when you look at the budget, some of the items are in yellow.
Okay.
Scott, is that correct? The budget that was submitted, there are some yellow items, and one of those is the trail, which I know we discussed, that the staff could do, and that, and also discussions about the rain gardens.
Yeah, that's, hello, this is Scott Hane. Yeah, that is the intent of the way that was broken out. You, it's priced and it's allocated that it could be done all through bid, and township staff would not have to, depending on their workload at the time, but, but there was a thought that some of those items. But there was a thought that some of those items could be done by staff. Staff has put the trail in before, and I believe they've built basins. But again, we don't always count on their availability, so we work it in that it could be bid at prevailing wage and accomplished that way. And like Mr. Wigglesworth mentioned, if the staff does do it, the match then is a little bit more favorable to the township.
Great, answer your question at that point. Yeah, we'd encourage if we can do some staff time, that's actually a great match. Actually, DCNR grants I've worked with in the past, it's actually pretty good numbers when they factor in staff hours and equipment.
Yeah, and we'll rework that before we submit it.
I mean, you can, I think you show kind of what DMA has, it's just, you have an opportunity as you go along with the grant process to designate how you're going to make your match. And that's something DMA can work with you on.
Okay, I thought that was done before the submission, but maybe not.
No, and Scott can correct me, Mr. Hain can correct me if I'm wrong, but you do have some wiggle room after you get awarded about how you, as the way I've understood, you have some wiggle room after you get the award about how you're going to do your match, and whether you're going to do some of it labor or some of it monetary.
Yeah, yes, we typically try and specify that with the application, but sometimes through sort of those negotiations that go on after you've submitted, that can be adjusted then.
It's just a tool in your toolbox at that point, so.
Yeah.
Okay, any more discussions at this point? Anything from the audience? I see none. So I will make, the motion would be, the motion is to submit the original DCR grant application for the Ayr Park Phase Two Submission Scope as discussed tonight. So is there a motion? Okay, motion from Mr. LaFever, is there a second? Second from Mr. Bennett, Ms. Switzer, please pull the board.
Mr. Weaver?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye, the highest habitified, nothing. Thank you, Mr. Hain, for putting that all together, appreciate it. Now we'll move on to old business now, is there any old business, there's nothing on the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I don't recall exactly where I read it in preparation for the meeting, but to my reading, David Martin Associates is projecting a completion of the conditional use revisions prior to working on the sign ordinances. And I'd like to know the status of that and see if we can set some goals for getting those major projects completed. Monday evening, zoning hearing board had the best part of three hours dealing with two sign issues. And there was need, I would say, in those discussions that a revised sign ordinance might have helped facilitate and make those meetings much less involved. Again, I just think we need to really keep concentrating on this. If we must complete the conditional use first, very well. But can we say when that can happen and when we can get into the signage?
Turn that over to Mr. Beck, what's the schedule at this point? You can, if you have that available right now, the kind, even if it's rough right now.
I hate to pass the buck, but I'm going to ask Scott Hain to weigh in, because his finger is directly on the pulse, him and Nick are working on it. We are anticipating having a draft back to staff and then to the planning group in the very near future, but he can address the question about how it's all intertwining with the sign ordinance update as well.
Hello again, just maybe to clarify, it's, we're trying to process these sort of in sequence, but we're at, we are working on that signage ordinance change. That's not static, we are, we're working on that, and we have a good bit of that completed already. We've done interviews with multiple township officials and with professionals in the industry. And we have highlighted and identified areas that we think should be adjusted. What we didn't want to do, and what we were trying to say with that, is that we don't want to bring them both in front of the board at the same time. So we'd really like to get that conditional use in, which we provided our draft to staff for review of that. So that should be ready to go very soon, that the conditional use will be ready to go through committee and get comments, and then move forward towards approval. And I'm saying conditional use, what we're, you know, we're trying to eliminate as many conditional uses that would become before you as possible with that activity. But like I said, we're following right behind it is the sign ordinance. And we have, like I said, we have a good bit of that work done already. So it will be ready as soon as the conditional use is done to then come into committee and move through the process also.
Thank you. Very well, I'm glad to hear that they're working on concurrently and that we will be moving to hopefully a conclusion of this. I do have another item of old business. There was some brief discussion about the possibility of discontinuance of the cog if we go to the LIMC. And I guess I'm reminded, maybe Mrs. Switzer, were we looking to other members of the cog as to what they were doing, or where did we leave this? And should we chat about it a bit more now, or should we actually take an action?
The next cog meeting is next week, I believe.
It is, yes.
And the agenda is being formed, and one of the items on the agenda is, should the cog continue? So in order to have that discussion, it would be beneficial if we knew the position of the board.
Okay.
Manheim Township has joined LIMC as well as East Hemfield. East Petersburg was, I'm not quite sure what their status is. So, we just need some direction.
My opinion is, even if the cog meets less frequently, it's a free cog, and it doesn't cost us anything. And it's a smaller group than LIMC. And it's more of a Hemfield-based group with Manheim Township thrown in into the mix. It doesn't hurt for us to belong to two. So that would be my position.
Well, I would, I'm hearing, and that, what I would make a positive is that if East Petersburg stays in a cog and we're working with them in Fire Commission, there's some benefits there for that working-togetherness.
There's also benefits of having a cog that represents your immediate area too. Where LIMC is a much more central part of the whole county, we have one group that is much more oriented just this area. So I don't see anything that hurts to belong to two. If we just lack agenda items, we just don't meet. So I think everyone would recommend necessarily we dissolve, dissolve the one at this point. And it might right now be our only way where we include East Pete too, depending on how they feel about LIMC or not. So, I don't know how the rest of you feel, but.
Have any of the other members of the cog weighed in?
West Hemfield has kind of indicated a little bit that they're a little iffy in that they want to stay. Obviously, if members pull out, then it goes away. So, my hope is that it really doesn't hurt, there's no fee like there is for LIMC. We can meet as frequently as we want or infrequently as we want. And it does allow a little bit better sharing between municipalities than when you don't have a cog. So I think there's a lot of benefits to having a cog, and I don't see any reason not to, for not belonging to multiple ones. So I know it's a drain on staff, so maybe we just don't meet as frequently, that could be part of the.
I think it's probably a good solution.
Discussion, and maybe we meet once a year, even once a year, getting the two largest municipalities in the county together just to talk about issues that are between Manheim Township and East Hemfield is worthwhile. We're getting East and West Hemfield talking about school district issues, which ultimately apply to relative LIMC is, I think, a worthwhile function. So, meeting just for the sake of meeting is a waste of time. So if that's starting, and I agree, we've been laid on agendas, so if that's starting to be an issue, maybe we start, the discussion might be, instead of dissolving it, what is the frequency that we really should be meeting? Any other feedback?
As far as I'm concerned, if the cogs accomplishing anything, doesn't cost us anything, why, I mean, why not continue with it? If it's not productive, obviously, it goes away. But if those who are participating feel that it's worthwhile, we're staying with it.
The one thing it did, if it didn't do anything else, the one thing it did do is it forced the LIMC to make necessary reforms and changes, which was a good thing. So that was, if the cog accomplished nothing else, like the Protestant Reformation of the Catholic Church, it did its part to make some necessary reforms to an organization that had gotten off track, and now it's back on track because of what this cog did, so. So I think we've got enough to talk about for next week with us, so.
Thank you.
Anything else for old business? Any new business? Okay, traffic commission report, Mr. LaFever, all yours.
Traffic commission meant tonight, and we moved to accept staff recommendations regarding some changes at the Shank Road Covered Bridge Intersection, including some stone ballast to help defray damage to the neighbor's property, and also relocation of stop signs, which should make them more functional as people exit the bridge and come to the bridge and maybe see the signs and et cetera. So we're looking forward to those changes, hopefully being a resolution to that question. We have Public Works is prepared and going to implement the twenty-five mile an hour painting on the road surface of Spring Valley Road and placing some digital speed monitors. And then watch how those efforts bear fruit, hopefully. That we know when we do final paving in, or repaving in August, that we maybe know a better or the best, that that is the best place for location of that painted surface and thing. Other items of Sharon Road drive neighbor concerns, and Main Street Speed in Landisville are still ongoing with no response from PNDOT on Landisville. At the Landisville Post Office, we've been advised of a problem from the post mistress of neighbors parking, parking in front of the post office for their parking, for their homes and their residence. And we're going to post twenty-minute signage there. And unfortunately, the police will need to mark tires and then go away and then come back and whatever. But nevertheless, we hope this effort will make it clear to those neighbors that they are not to park there. It's unfortunate we need to do this, but we do. And there's also a bit of a concern with the handicapped space we created across the street and how that can be interfaced with the postal truck access to the post office. That was the essence of the meeting, and there's my report.
Thank you, Ms. LaFever. So next we'll move on to Development Services Project Report, Mr. Beck.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First on the list is the official map. We did receive the County Planning Commission review, and as expected, it was favorable. It was at the Township Planning Commission, March tenth. It was their first introduction to the official map, and we'll be moving on, seeking a recommendation from Planning Commission at their April meeting. As of last Friday, township staff submitted the Transportation Needs Identification Forms for the twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-six tip for the following bridges, intersections, and roads. The Amtrak Bridge over Church Street, EH1, the South Chickies Road Bridge, EH3, the Farming Dale Road Bridge, EH7, the Dairy Road Bridge, Lititz Road and State Route Seventy-two intersection, Stony Battery Road and State Route Twenty-three intersection, Good Drive and Rorstedown Road. I believe it was the first meeting in February, or maybe the second meeting in February. There had been some discussion about trees removed at a property along Harrisburg Pike. I have since received an inspection report from the County Conservation District, which was attached as part of my report. Actually, no, it was the other thing from County Conservation District, I apologize. But Eric Howe from the County Conservation District was out at twenty-three fifty-five Harrisburg Pike for an inspection on a alleged complaint regarding the removal of the trees. During his inspection, he talked to the owner and confirmed that there was no violation, and the owner was removing ash trees due to disease from the ashbore. What's attached to my report is the Lancaster County Conservation District Program Activities Report for twenty twenty, and, which indicates that Chapter 102, Chapter 105, and MPDES programs, three projects had their permits terminated, which is a positive sign that the projects were completed. Thirteen projects received their permits, and the County Conservation District performed twenty-six inspections and conducted five complaint investigations. Staff met with the development team for the Brookside Health, Lancaster Medical Center Hospital, and Brookside Development. And the state road base course should be installed in late March to early April. The development team is moving forward and planning to dedicate the state road to the township at the April twentieth meeting. At this point in time, the developers indicated they have a meeting scheduled in May of twenty-one to learn if they have received the grant funding for the, to assist them in installing the wearing course for state road. They, regardless, they are scheduled to install the wearing course in early to mid-June. Seven oh one Stony Battery Road, the project had a pre-construction meeting. Staff also issued a demolition permit for the existing house and barn on the property. And the developer has agreed to forego the deferral agreement for the sidewalk and install the by-two-minute trail as part of the site work and construction of the building. The board, as part of the consent agenda, did approve a time extension to record the plans for seven oh one Stony Battery Road and seven ninety-one Stony Battery Road. Staff met with the development team for the project at thirty seventy-two Nold Road to discuss the Township Engineers Review Letter, that occurred on March tenth. Staff anticipates a revision submission no later than March twenty-sixth in anticipation of a turnaround review by DMA and then scheduling for the PC for their review and recommendation at the April fourteenth meeting. Oak Tree Outdoor Advertising applied to the zoning hearing board and met with them on Monday, March fifteenth, for two requested variances, one for height and one for dwell time for message changes. The zoning hearing board did approve both variances with some negotiation. The applicant agreed to reduce the height from forty-five feet to no taller than the building and agreed to, instead of ten-second dwell time, to a twenty-second dwell time for the digital billboard. The Ducklings Daycare Project thirty-one oh one Yellow Goose Road went to the Planning Commission on March tenth. The Planning Commission reviewed and recommended conditional approval of the final plan and conditional and approval of the modification, of the associated modifications. The final plan is tentatively scheduled for supervisor action at the April seventh meeting. We received a final plan submission for the Ironstone Building Materials Project on Genoese Drive. The gentleman just acted on a sketch plan and waiver request for the Lancaster AMA Realty Ventures LLC project at sixteen fifty-five Columbia Avenue. And we have received a lock consolidation plan for the Farmstead. a lot consolidation plan for the Farmstead at Lime Spring Square, which is now owned by Homestead Village. The plan is to consolidate all of the lots into one single property. And they also filed a revised final land development plan to redevelop the clubhouse. They will raise the existing clubhouse, which was a single-family detached dwelling that was converted to the clubhouse, and in its place, they will build a new clubhouse with some associated parking. And thus concludes my report.
Any questions of John at this point?
Just a quick question on, on the, on the 791 and, and that development, the three, 701 and 791. As it pertains to walking trails, it's, it seems like the projects are stretching out a little bit. Is there any possible way that we can get the, the trails in before construction is completed?
It is, it's very likely that they will be in before the project's completed. Since it's bituminous, it, it's all dependent upon their schedule to pave. Most likely, they will do that at the same time they're going to pave their parking areas. However, staff will reach out to them and try and get them to agree to at least give us a timeline for when those trails will be installed and ensure us that they'll be installed prior to the completion of the building.
Well, I, I expect, I'm just, I'm just thinking that this last construction is going to take a little longer. Maybe.
It, it does ma, it does make sense, Tom. Due to the fact that they were two different projects, I didn't have a chance to talk with the developers about 791. It was one of those things, for whatever reason, they wanted to keep separate. However, they have not submitted the agreements, and we do anticipate having the same conversation with them about installing the trail as part of construction rather than a deferment. However, they might, because of timing for their project, they might pursue the deferment agreement in order to record the plans at this time, but then as part of construction, install the trail. But I understand your point, and I will reach out to the development team and have that conversation with them.
Perfect. Thank you. Any other discussion at this point? My question I got is, we're talking about the, we always brought up the ash pour thing with that one property. Do we know what has been going on with the riparian buffer and all the tree planting along that same creek, all beyond that, that one property? What's the, what's the Conservation District doing there?
Are you specifically talking about the trees being planted?
Yeah, there's a, even beyond that, you go all the way up to, if you, it's a long, it's a very long stretch. There's multiple properties at this point. So what's, what's the Conservation District doing?
It, it actually does not involve the Conservation District. It's the Alliance for the Chesapeake Bay.
Okay.
They have a program where they will come in and remove invasive species and plant native trees to establish a more distinct and more fruitful riparian buffer along Swarren Run. They're actually doing it in multiple areas. They, we have talked to them. Have they installed the trees?
Yes, they have.
They installed trees here on the Aheer Park property as part of that project. It's actually a very, very good endeavor because it's actually free to any property owner that wants to install the trees. The Alliance for the Bay actually does the work. They have contractors that will come out and remove any brush or anything else. They actually had a very large project just south of Harrisburg Pike where it meets, intersects with Yellow Goose Road, where they had to remove bamboo that had grown out of control. They had a contractor in there to successfully remove it so they could plant their trees. The Township-owned property, that's along Harrisburg Pike, we had trees planted there. So they actually get into an agreement with the property owners for maintenance, where they can come in and do the maintenance in the first two years, and that's really the, the key of the key portion of the growing season or the growing time span for the trees, where it's, it's integral for the trees as far as making sure that the, I can't remember the name, the protectors that go around the trunk of the tree, that they're maintained, they're engineered to split once the tree actually gets large enough. It protects them from birds going in and affecting the growth of the tree, and then they actually spray weed barrier around the tree to prevent any obtrusive growth that would occur in that area. And after that two years, then the property owner is well-established with maintenance and then takes over for, from the Alliance for the Chesapeake Bay to maintain those trees.
Well, glad we found out why they were putting them up. Be nice next time they give us a little bit of a heads up. We could actually promote what they're doing if we kind of know.
We, we did, we did. We had it on our Township website. We actually, I believe we put it out on our Township newsletter, or if we didn't, we, we put it on the website and tried to get as much help as we could for the Alliance for the Bay. The one downside is we were trying to get them to enact easements on, for the riparian buffer, and it was one of those things where we couldn't, couldn't come to an agreement or work through that because of the nature of the program.
If I could also add to support John, the Alliance for the Chesapeake Bay is doing a project at, at Hark. They're in the process of planning and executing that, so they do a very nice job with, with this, this kind of thing. And, and again, to John's point, for two years, you don't have to do anything. They take care of all, all the maintenance. So pretty good.
Sounds like a good deal.
Yep.
Okay, Ms. Switzer, manager's report.
So you, earlier this evening, we mentioned that Sentinel Road let date has been moved to 1/13/2022. We discussed the rights away and the status of those. Church Street paving, not a whole lot more to report other than your action, and we need to advise the residents of that status. Old Roarstown Road, we're struggling with that. That still has a let date of 9/21/2021. We're probably not going to, I'm not going to say that. It's still set for September. We're kind of stalled. PennDOT is processing the funding supplement that we approved. This is not on their ECMS program. It's still paper, which takes even longer to process. They're moving through the process, but at this point, McMahon, no, not McMahon, Montgomery Taylor doesn't have the necessary supplement in place to continue their process. Farmingdale Road, not very good news there. McMahon is struggling to get through the HOP submission. They're now on their fourth review letter with comments. They have not gotten that through. They need to resubmit probably another week yet. That, that review came last week. We also got a report back from the erosion and sediment control people. There's some comments there that need to be worked through. They're still plugging away. We are hoping for a resubmission. It does push the let date back probably about two more weeks. Still moving along with the right-of-way acquisition as well. We haven't secured any of those at this point. I think there's six of them. As John mentioned, the state road projects are gearing up and, and starting again for the season. We did hear from PennDOT regarding the interchange. Their completion date was 8/31. At this point, they're looking at an 8/9 completion of this year. So that's going to be finalizing as, as the weather breaks. Commerce Park, that, that middle section of the interchange, they're still waiting for that utility pole to get moved from the one access point. And then John explained what's going on with the state road dedication and reopening state road, which should happen probably on the 22nd. Four Seasons and Blue Collar, the HVAC system, we had a meeting there this afternoon. Tom Bennett was there, as well as Mike O'Brien, some of the engineers involved, and also the Blue Collar people. We seem to have gotten through to a new schedule, which probably will, for their opening, which probably will be June 1st or before. The HVAC units will eventually get there. Their work will be completed probably end of April, beginning of May, give it some cushion. So we are hoping for a June 1st opening, possibly middle of May. There will be discussion of the REC Authority next week regarding some additional concessions regarding rent payment. The authority granted them concessions for February and March. They will probably need something for April and May. I believe Tom has some thoughts about what he would like to see happen. Mike O'Brien also has some thoughts, so that's going to be a discussion point next week. The authority is having Blue Collar come to that meeting to discuss and update the authority on what the progress is and their plans. They have moved down to the Snack Bar area and started renovating that in, in an effort to gain revenue quicker for them. So we're thinking about maybe tapping into that revenue source, not for the full rent, but at least a partial of that rent would come back to the township. American Rescue Plan funding. I've sent an email out to the board. According to the reports, the township should be getting $2.4 million over two payments, probably one in June of this year and sometime in 2022. At the time that the email went out, we didn't know of any conditions other than they could not be used for a tax reduction or pension funding. I participated in, in the Pell Raz Conference today. It appears that there are more federal regulations coming out for use of that money. So I need to explore that a little bit further, so there will be conditions on that money expenditure. SRBC and the Four Seasons permit for well water extraction are coming due. The submission deadline is November 15 of this year. We are working with DMA and Joe Muha, Superintendent at the golf course. We had a meeting with them. We're talking about groundwater withdrawal, monitoring and processing the, during the season and watching that withdrawal. We were warned by SRBC that they would be looking for a reduction in our current withdrawal number. So we'll have to look very closely at that and see what we can, we can accommodate that or have to accommodate that.
What's driving that, what's driving that reduction?
I think that's a common request every time there's a submission. They have worked with Hemfield Water.
Yeah, I'm very sensitive to that matter.
Hemfield, they, they want to settle with Hemfield Water, and they anticipate doing that within the next two months and finalizing that sometime this year. They don't want to negotiate with us and discuss ours until theirs is settled, is what we were told by SRBC.
So the, the Water Authority is still capped, right?
Or they're, they're trying to cap us, and they've capped the Water Authority, too.
Right.
So when they say settle, what does that mean?
They've been negotiating, and there was a court filing on behalf of Hemfield Water regarding the, the severe decrease in the amount of withdrawal from the aquifer. I don't know the details of it. I haven't talked to Steve for a while. But according to SRBC, it's very close to being negotiated into a settlement of something they can live with. But they weren't willing to commit or discuss ours until that was settled, other than the fact that they wanted a reduction.
So a reduction in what Hemfield Water takes from the aquifers is made up from water from Lancaster City?
Yes, that's how they solve their issue.
Yep. So we, water that comes from a spring, we can't withdraw, but we can draw water from the Susquehanna. That's unclean. Mind boggling. The reason why it's called Indian Spring.
The Water Works grant, we had gotten $20,000 to do a study regarding planning out access for pedestrian and bicycles along the Harrisburg Corridor. We are having a stakeholders meeting next week, hopefully. DMA is putting out the information for that probably tomorrow. So that's moving forward. In terms of group reports, we did have a public works group meeting. The main focus of that meeting was truck routes and what we have, what we don't have, how we post them, the backup data that we have or don't have. So what's going to happen is the planning department will be putting together some supplemental information presented to the board and look at this as a whole project, as a holistic kind of view of the township, how trucks go to and from our borders, and the best method to get them there, and then to then follow that up with how truck routes should be posted properly so that enforcement can happen. That's all I have, unless there's questions.
Any questions of the board?
I did have one other thing. We did have interviews this evening regarding vacancies we have on some commissions. We currently have vacancies of the two Planning Commission members as alternates and also alternate position in the zoning hearing board. So those, some of those interviews occurred. We are going to re-advertise and look for additional applicants and future interviews so that we have a larger pool to pool from.
The one alternate Planning Commission member, is he also possibly interested in being on the zoning hearing board still?
We didn't pursue that. He did indicate that at one point, Mr. Garringer.
He did when he, he did when he submitted his name for, as being interested.
Maybe you could get some closure on that?
We can. We can reach out to him.
And we might have three vacancies on Planning Commission then.
True. We will reach out. And that was all I had.
Any other discussion of the board? We'll now open this up to public comment. Is there any public comment? Ms. Garber, do you have anything on your own?
I have received nothing.
Okay. Okay, saying none. We'll close public comment. Any more comments of the board? Okay, saying none, we will adjourn the meeting at, looks like 8:08 PM.